Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just as one. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Gitcher.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noonan.
Here.
Eleven present.
Good evening and welcome everyone to the chamber and welcome the public as well at home who are watching. Any member have moment of silence? Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Marie A. Geary, wife of Eugene Robert Geary, who predeceased her along with her grandson, Arum John Belgerian. Following Jean's passing, Marie went on to complete the task of nurturing their children, leading by example and illustrating to them with grace, faith, strength, and love the importance of family. Marie had many adventures with family and friends and enjoyed long-lasting friendships and travel with her close circle of friends referred to lovingly by her children as "the posse." They were quite in abundance at Marie's wake and funeral, and you could clearly see the love they had for Marie. Never a dull moment raising her family or traveling, Marie also gave her time generously as a volunteer to many charitable endeavors, in particular two of her favorites, the Marcha Dimes and Habitat for Humanity. Marie leaves her eight loving children, Suzanne, Thomas, Christine, Jackie, Michael, our city clerk, Maria, Edward, and Eugene Geary Jr., sixteen grandchildren who provided her with great joy and amusement, and eight great-grandchildren. We offer our sincere condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends, as well as her posse. May she rest in peace. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Sebastian John Ponte, the beloved three-year-old son of Jay Michael and Jennifer Martinez Ponte, a former employee of Lowell City Clerk's office. Sebastian was a triplet to Zachary and Sister Sophia. He always looked forward to visits with his big sister, Mackenzie. Sebastian loved to listen to music, dance, play with his cars, and most of all, he loved bath time. He was a light and joy to all the people in his life. In addition to his parents, brother, and sisters, Sebastian is survived by his maternal grandfather Santos Manny Martinez, paternal grandparents Jose and Maria Ponte, and many relatives. Our hearts and prayers go out to the parents, family, relatives, and many friends. God bless their little angel. And as well as offering a moment of silence in docking chamber to all who have passed on since our last city council meeting, God bless them all. Thank you.
Counsel Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a moment of silence for Davi Tran Bich of Lowell, passed away on Wednesday, March 1st. It was a difficult and saddened week for friend and family members to wrap their head around the passing of Davi. Many of us had the pleasure of working with her through community work, like Uncle Dan Shrub, Mills City Growth, Kamaa New Year Celebration at Clement Day Park, Savis Asian Water Festival, and many other for many years. Davi was a kind and compassionate person. She is survived by her husband Van Bich. Davi was born in Manila, Philippines, daughter of Trung Tran of Vietnam, Long Touch of Cambodia. Davi graduated from Lowell High School and Walthely College. She was employed by Smart Beer in Somerville and previously worked for Uncle Dan Shrub. Davi was a beloved wife, daughter, friend, mentor, and loyal advocate for the City of Lowell community. Beside her husband, she is survived by her brother, Bit Kya, and his wife Kim of Lowell. Her three sisters, Venti William and her husband Robert of Kansas City, Dani Tran Chan and her husband Guan Chan of Tingsboro, and Donna Tran of Lowell. My heart and the heart of many and the heart of the whole city go out to the husband, to her husband Van Bich and family. Their loss is beyond belief. May she rest in peace.
Counsel Rourke. Yes, Counsel Rourke. Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Kathleen P. Broderick of Wellesley, Massachusetts, formerly of Lowell, passed away in February at Waterstone of Wellesley, assisted living center surrounded by her loving family. Born in Lowell, Massachusetts, March 18th, 1947, the daughter of the late Leo and late Doris Hill McHale. She attended St. Michael's Grammar School, was a graduate of Keith Hall, class of 1964. Later, Kathy attended grade Lowell Tech High School and graduated from there as a licensed practical nurse. Prior to her retirement in 2007, Kathy worked as a corporate travel agent for American Express in their Boston office. And later in life, she devoted her time to various volunteering positions mentoring teenage girls. She is, Kathy is survived by her three sons, Tomix Broderick Jr. and his wife Nancy of Milton, former Lowell City Councilor Kevin Broderick and his wife Julie of Groton, and Dr. John Broderick and his wife Melissa of North Andover. They have eleven grandchildren. In addition, she is also survived by her siblings Janet Dunne who of Oysterville, Mass., Sharon O'Brien of Los Altos, California, Martha Merritt and her husband George of Kenny Bunkport, Maine, Nancy Stevens and her husband John of Boston, Donald McHale and his wife Paula of Tingsboro, and Nobert McHale of North Chelmsford. She'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other moment of silence, any memorial? Here and now, I do have one. If there's no objection, I will read the memorial from up here, and I'm reading this also on behalf of Counsel Rourke, who brought in the writing for me. This memorial is for the grandmother of Daniel McFadden, who is the director and president of the Chamber of Commerce. Catherine Bergeron, beloved mother, stepmother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and aunt and sister, 93, of Lowell, Massachusetts, passed away peacefully at home, surrounded by her family on Friday, March 3rd, 2023. She was the loving wife of the late Joseph Bergeron, who died on April 9th, 2018, born on October 7th, 1929, in Leominster, Massachusetts, the daughter of the late Carl A. and the late Ruth McMillan Hannigan. She attended Leominster Schools and graduated from Lowell High School in the class of 1946. Prior to her retirement at 83, Kay was a school bus driver for AG Gagnon Transportation. Among her many interests, Kay enjoyed traveling, bowling, puzzles, trips to the casino, spinners' baseball games, and watching the Boston Red Sox. However, her greatest joy was the time she spent with her children, nieces, nephews, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Kay leaves behind her children, James Bergeron and his wife Jean, Thomas Bergeron and his wife Janine, Catherine Jendron, Gary Bergeron and his wife Julian, Edward Bergeron and Stephen Bergeron, as well as her stepson Joseph Bergeron Jr. She also leaves behind sixteen grandchildren, C. Rosie, Julian, Stephen John Ramos, Sabrina Richard, Scott, Sarah, Daniel McFadden, Brian, Timothy, Nicole Collins, Jessica Goguen, Brittany Martell, Katie, Evan, Richard, and Celeste, as well as nineteen grandchildren, one great-grandchild. She was also the foster parent to Lisa Marie Hannigan Bartlett and Colleen Hannigan Giraud and Sister James Hannigan. She was predeceased by her son Richard Bergeron, daughter Terry Ann Bergeron, and stepdaughter Patricia Richard, and son-in-law David Richard. On behalf of the entire city council, we extend our condolences to her family. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. Now we start the agenda with the mayor's business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation, Motion to Accept and Place on Fire by Counsel Mercier, second by Counsel Leahy. Motion is adopted. 2.2 is the citation. We did not have sufficient time to prepare this, so we're going to skip this tonight. We now go to Section 3, which is the city clerk. 3.1, Minutes of City Council Regular Meeting, February 28th for Acceptance, Motion by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Rourke. Motion is adopted. We now go to Section 4 on the agenda, which is the communications from City Manager. We'll start with motion response A, a motion by myself on Powell and Parker Street. I write the report. I know something's going to be fixed on it temporary. There's going to be a long-term goal to make this area nice for the business area. I want to thank the DPD Director for preparing this report and looking at it with the DPW as well. No other comments in that. We now go to motion response B. Counsel Janess, did you want to say something?
Just on B.
On B, okay. Motion Response B is on HCID. Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Giovanni Baez Rose, Assistant City Manager, DPD Director, and the rest of the administration. Thank you for your work on this. As we've talked about, this is some critical space in the city that there's development opportunity here, and you know, the master plan's been out there for a while. So I appreciate having a fresh look at this and, you know, trying to continue to drum up interest on these parcels and see what we can do there. So I just wanted to say thank you for the report, and I look forward to continued discussions on this and hearing what kind of fruit you can bear with your negotiations. Thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll echo what my colleague said, and really can't say too much different than what I said when originally putting this motion forward, which is that I hope as we are in conversation with the various developers that are referenced here is coming in and taking a look and, you know, coming forward with ideas about these parcels, just that we remain adaptive based on the current conditions. I know the, you know, the master plan was developed at a time that was, you know, pre-pandemic and we're kind of adapting to situations where the balance between, you know, commercial and residential may have shifted in what developers want to do. So I know we can't get into too much detail here on the council floor as, you know, these are essentially negotiations with developers, but we just, you know, urge the administration to be adaptive and even imaginative in terms of what we can do with that space and how we might be able to incorporate the parcels that are designated as open space to kind of supplement what we're trying to do with some of the commercial and residential parcels there. So thank you very much for the response and glad that we're, it's a good issue to have that we're dealing with interest from various parties over in the area, which is a really important area for economic development. So thank you for the response and look forward to hearing more as well.
Thank you, Counsel. The next motion response is C on polling location, polling location at Daly School. Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just thrilled to say that the Bailey Elementary School is changing to the Daly Middle School, and I know the competent staff in the election office will alert the registered voters, and they'll receive the notice in the mail closer to the upcoming municipal election. Motion complete. Thank you very much. Thanks, Greg. Thank you.
Counsel Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Counsel Mercier's, and I want to thank the administrations and the elections directors for, you know, listening to the voters, and this is a concern that was expressed the last election as to accessibility, handicap, and all that, and this change will make a lot of voters in the Highlands very happy, you know, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here and now, I see that the Director of the Election Office is here as well. Welcome, Mr. Greg Pappas. We now go to the next motion response on Emergency Response Plan. It didn't show who put this motion forward. Anybody has comments or question? Counsel Noonan.
I did, Mr. Mayor. I thank you. I thanks Chief Charant for the report, and he's actually working on it, and you know, I just want to ask the chief and his team to keep the council updated on it as the interview process is complete and when you do the assessment, and so I'm looking for the update on it in the near future. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. The chief has had all the interviews completed, and he's actually tallying all the scores, and hopefully we'll be talking to Ms. Calery by week's end, we hope. And hopefully there's going to be a discussion, excuse me, a decision by the chief and that team soon, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Noonan. Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want some clarification on this. Seems like we're looking to fill a position for a person on the emergency management as a coordinator. This position is in conjunction with a full-time fire lieutenant's position. Am I led to believe there are no fire lieutenant in the fire department that could be put in this position to be the coordinator? So we looking, I just, I don't understand. I don't get it.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Currently right now, Counselor, this position's being filled actually by the chief. So in any situation, like the unfortunate incident that we had down the street just a couple of months, a few months ago, when we had a spring into action, it was actually the chief that was in control of the entire situation with the flooding. So what we're looking to do is bring on a full-time person for our emergency management.
Well, it's telling me in this report that this position is in conjunction with the full-time fire lieutenant's position. That's what this report says, and I'm thinking, is there not a fire lieutenant? So how do I explain this? I don't.
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Counselor. So the emergency management office has a full-time fire lieutenant's position associated with it, and this will be the civilian counterpart. The problem with the full-time firefighter's position is a lot of times it ends up being the most junior lieutenant, and then within about a year's time, they rotate out, and so we have a constant flow of individuals who are moving back to the company at the firehouses. This position offers us an opportunity to stabilize the office with somebody who's had the civilian training from the non-emergency aspect specifically for pre-planning and updating all of our plans within the city. So that's why we're looking to fill this out, but both are integral parts of the Office of Emergency Management.
Then that piece should not have been in there. Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Mercier. Any other comments or question on that motion response? Seeing no hands, we now go to the next motion response. E on ARPA Premium Pay. Counsel Gitcher.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the City Manager. Mayor Golden, did the police and fire have to fill out the same forms that were being provided in this packet?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. They didn't, they went through the union, actually. The union came through and filed their forms, and then it was executed that way.
So there's similar requirements of the hours that were determined to work in the days? $167 a month, 30 days, is that a requirement in the union agreement?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. All of that is correct. That is all the same.
So then how did they get paid $2,505? Because there is no employee in the city that can work 30 days in a month, and especially the month of February. It says they have to work 30 days, and if they use any vacation or sick time, those days are not eligible for payment. So I'm trying to do the math and logically come to these numbers, which there's no max payout that should have been paid, but it seems like, and we pay an awful lot of money in overtime to these two departments because people are out. So I just question, there's only so many days that can be worked within this period of time, and how they all got to the $2,500 mark when each day is only worth $5.56?
Mr. Manager.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. That dollar figure was given per month that was worked, provided that they didn't, they were not out on 111F.
In the memo that's given out, it says $167 per month divided by 30 days came to the $5.56 per day, which that can't be. If there's only five days in a week and you're, say, a clerk in City Hall, you can only work five days and say there's a four-week month, that's 20 days in the month. So that 167 should have been divided by 20, not by 30, because those are the actual days that they can actually work.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. This particular piece is discretionary for us to move forward on the, let's take the fire department, for instance. The fire department works a completely different shift. The police department works a completely different shift, four and twos, excuse me. Police department is four on, two off. The fire department works 24-hour shifts. And let's say, let's say the treasurer's office, they work in five days a week. So there was a discretionary piece that we had to look at as to how to come up with that $167 per month.
So there's actually no way any other employee can get to the $2,500 mark in the city besides the police and fire, because there's no way anybody can work 30 days as outlined. And I understand this is a draft, and maybe something that we want to relook at, because if there's nobody who can actually work those 30 days in a month, you can work five out of seven on a regular person's shift at the DPW or water or wastewater or you take anywhere, there's no way anyone's working seven days. And then if you take vacation and sick time, this formula doesn't work remotely the same. So I understand it's a draft, but we may want to take a look back at that so that it can actually work.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. The 167 was a negotiated dollar figure per month. So yes, we could go back in and say 167 per days worked in a month, not 30, but 25, if that we could rewrite that.
Does that make sense? Just as I read it, I seen 30 days, and I don't think any employee can.
We could exclude the weekends, but what we're getting at is, for once again, the fire department with 24-hour shifts and the police department, four on, two off, we're just trying to get to, they were paid that $167 per month. We were just using that 30-day per month. So we could go back in and just, you know, deduct the weekends if that would be appropriate.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that, highlight that, because when someone fills out the sheet from page five, there's no way that anyone's going to come near that, because it's realistically only 340 days that they can work over that 15-month period. So realistically, the most they could get is $1,890 if we did it the other way. So thank you for relooking into it.
Yes.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. The intention, I apologize, Counselor, was the 167 per month per the working day. That's an error on my part. My apologies.
Every time I read these things, I read them literally just so that we can, you know, because when you deal with you and.
Very literally, yes. Gotcha.
Yes, Counsel Gitcher. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I just have a question. I've received a couple phone calls. As far as what we've already paid out, you spoke earlier that the fire and police unions handled whatever was paid out previously. Did we check to see if any of these employees were actually out on injured reserve or any of that stuff in the meantime? Because I did receive calls, and they are saying there have been some employees that have been out on injury that received the money. So I don't know if there was a system of checks and balance, and if the employees themselves didn't fill out the form, pretty much self-certify, and then what would be the recourse?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Yes, Counselor, we did. We checked through workers' compensation, the workers' comp employee that we have working for us here in the city, as well as the auditor. And if, I could always encourage people if they were to do that, or if they made a mistake, they should contact us so we could rectify that situation, but we did have checks and balances in place for that.
Thank you.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the City Manager or CFO, I'm not sure who would answer this, but I did have some questions about the bullet point two about eligible due to wage qualifications optional, and eligible because employee is not exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act overtime provisions optional. What makes that optional? Is it our decision? Is it, I mean, who makes the decision as to whether or not something is required there?
Mr. Manager. To Mr. Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, these guidelines that are included here, the draft for the council's review, we coordinated these with the audit firm, Powers &amp; Sullivan, but these are based on the regulations that were issued in the Treasury final rule. So there's a multi-part test to determine individual employee's eligibility. there's a, a multi-part test to determine an individual employee's eligibility, the first being a requirement that they worked in person during the eligibility period, which we're calling a 15-month period between March 10th, 2020, and June 15th, 2021. There are additional, there are additional criteria that an individual doesn't have to meet all of them. That's why they're called optional, but they must meet at least one of these other additional criteria. So that's why it's listed in the form as optional. Those are wage qualifications, and these match up with the Treasury guidance. So if you make below the threshold set in the guidance, which is somewhere around $100,000 a year, it's 150% of the area median income, then you're eligible. If you are exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act, then you're eligible. If you, there's another one here. If, if you do not meet the eligibility and those other two optional categories, you can still provide written justification that would need to be approved at the department head level, as well as at the administration, the city managers' level, and you may still be eligible even if you are not, if you do not meet the Fair Labor Standard Act exemption and you are above the wage threshold. If you worked or had some kind of health reason why you may have been at risk, but your work was still responsive to the pandemic and you worked in person, you could still be eligible, but we require written justification. So that's how we wrote it up as optional, but we will require employees to provide justification, documentation to substantiate some of those other optional categories. But the one requirement, in order to receive any payment, you must have worked in person during the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. I, I did receive a question from somebody who was under the impression that the $109,410 cutoff was a cutoff, and if you made more than that, that was it. And I didn't understand the regulation, so that's, that's the nature, the reason for my question, and I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Councilor Gitchia?
Through you again to the CFO or to the manager. How was it calculated? Because in the firefighters and the police, on number two of the agreement, it says, "The city and the unions have agreed that the individual amount for each member is an equal amount based on the mutually agreed upon figure of $167 a month for each month worked during the pandemic." What triggered a full month of work? If people took vacation, which we've seen all the way through our overtime sheets, how they've gone up, but we really haven't seen, we see everybody got the $2,500 almost. So what triggered, because people had to use like two weeks vacation in a row during one month. How did they get paid a full month if they were using the two-week vacation? Per the, and I understand it's a union agreement, but I just wonder, what was the trigger? Was it 50% of the month they had to work? Or was it, was there a trigger that, that determined month? Because in this, it doesn't say that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That was the negotiation that we got into in, in regards to backing into the number between the police and the fire department. And what we really were trying to look at was who wasn't at work and the, the folks in, in this situation with police and fire, who was on 111F? Because 111F showed that the individuals who were out because of injury. What we were trying to do is to ensure that there were some individuals that, you know, through no fault of their own were injured, but we weren't looking to compensate them. What we're trying to do is compensate employees who were working hard throughout the pandemic, and if they did happen to take a, you know, a well-deserved break or vacation, there's nothing wrong with that. We're not trying to penalize or punish anybody that happened to take a, a vacation during that timeframe, because as we all know, the stress that was, that people are going under. But we made the decision, and I would like to say it was a group decision amongst everybody when we were going back and forth, that if somebody happened to go out because of an injury, then that was something that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to, to credit if, if, if you would, if that's, if that's the proper terminology.
I don't disagree with the way it was done with using vacation in the formula. I'm not disagreeing with that, because to me, that's time worked. But when I read the certification piece that we're handing now to all the other employees, it seems like we got a different skill. And, and this council is extremely clear that we wanted everybody treated equally across the board like this. So when we looked at this one, it, it says right clearly in it, "The grid above for each month worked, write the number of days in which you worked in person onsite for the city of Lowell in your job class." And it says, "For any month when you worked remotely or you were out on leave for any reason." So when you're out on leave for any reason, does that encaps sick in vacation time? So those, that's the question that when I read these things, I look at and say, well, how did we get so many people that got the full amount in these two departments? But if you go by this, if I'm out for any reason, sick, vacation, personal time, all that is out for any reason. And I just want to make sure that our phones aren't ringing 20 minutes after this is done and everyone gets their pay, as the rest of the council has gone through this, and we all were pretty clear that we, I think we were, at least I'll only speak for myself, that I thought that it was going to be the same terms and agreement that the police and fire were under. And I just thought that that was fair. And, and I understand this is a draft, so that's what we're just trying to go back and forth on language to figure out, will this be equal to the same signing that the police and fire had? That's all.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councillor, we are trying to be as fair as possible across the, across the board. But the easiest way for us to look at from the public safety side with the 111F side of things, if people were out because of an injury, I, I guess that's the best way we could do this, to try to ensure that everybody who is eligible for this, and that's, you know, one of the caveats to this is working in person. Anybody in, in the public safety world, they didn't have that option to work from home, where others may have or may not have had that option to work from home. Now, there are many of our employees that did not have that option, but there are some employees that indeed did have that option. So there's, I mean, there are going to be, I believe, bumps along the road with this, but we are, we are committed because the council has agreed, and we, we want to move forward with this. And to ensure that everybody feels valued to, because quite frankly, everybody was working hard during the pandemic. But we do need to try to figure this out, and we are going to, we will figure this out.
I don't want to steal Councilor Robinson's thunder on his motion for 8.2. But in my eyes, if there was a time clock where you punched in, this would have made it a lot easier for the CFO to look at and say, okay, someone was here. It's all tallied across. It would have went to the time sheets. It would all be there. But now we have to put in, you know, all of these things with employee certification, the, the department head certification. It wouldn't have had to been done if we had people who actually had to punch in for their positions, and it would all been recorded so that he would have went back to it. So I, I do think that when we look at 8.2, it has a lot of value for the city in the savings when we start to do research on who was here, who wasn't here. Thank you.
Councilor Rook?
Yeah, I think the manager answered my question, honest to be. So police and fire did not have the option of working from home. Is Mr. Flynn here tonight? So just a quick question. Under the ARPA guidelines, if employees worked from home, are they eligible for the ARPA premium pay?
They're not, no. Not for the time that they worked from home.
Okay. And then I'll imagine, Mr. Manager, is, so do department heads have that time period of who was in the office and who was at home?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Yes, they should have that.
Okay. I mean, and if, and if not, then, you know, you gotta do some digging, but so it should be pretty simple to, you know, to decipher what's eligible and what's not.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Yes, it should be.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councillor. Councillor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the issue here, and this really isn't something I had picked up on until my colleague to the left pointed it out here, but I think that if I can attempt to simplify the issue here, it's that the, the two sentences that Councilor Gitchia just read a couple of minutes ago seem to be not in harmony and just need to be clarified. One request that the employees outside of public safety write the number of days in which they worked in a month. The next sentence, similar to the agreements I think that were negotiated with public safety, states that essentially you're paid, you know, a certain amount for a month as long as you are not on leave in that month. I, I think, if, if I'm understanding correctly here, it's just two sentences that sort of need to be clarified in how a month, one month of work is defined in the agreement for the, the employees outside of public safety. So I think, I'm sure the manager will be back to us with just some clarification on that. And good, I think it was good detail pointed out by Councilor Gitchia here. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is a very good discussion to help us fine-tune, which are obviously drafts. Now, the intention here, or the spirit of what we're attempting to do with the other classifications, is to make a payment of $167 per month regardless, as long as you worked all of the days in that month in person, you should get $167. Now, with the discussion that's happening, happening here, we can fine-tune the verbiage in the forms to better drive that point home. But the only proration and the only need for proration and the reason why it's included in the form is in the event that in that month, you as an individual employee worked some portion remotely. So we wanted to not disqualify employees if they worked half of the month at home, but half of the month in person. We needed to offer some pathway for that employee to get a prorated share of the, the month. So the intention was if you, if it's a month like February and you worked 28 days, you'd get $167. And, you know, we appreciate the discussion here and we'll help clarify that in the language of the, the forms when they, the final forms.
Yes, councillor Drinkwater?
I believe that clarified it, at least from my perspective. So yeah, thank you. I'll say.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Robinson?
Has any discussion been brought forward about employees that worked and have since left?
Mr. Connor?
About?
Or Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That's, that conversation's still a work in progress. We're quite frankly trying to get through this right now, to be honest with you, councillor.
Thank you.
Councilor Mosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're, I kind of let everybody say what they had to say. So since we're in the area of ARPA funding, I want to leave this on a good note and say that we all had the opportunity to go in the JFK Plaza before the council meeting and look at money that was so wonderfully spent to buy a wastewater vehicle that goes into the pipes and sees if there's any breakage or what the condition of them is. And it was fascinating to go inside the vehicle and actually see all that. So Councilor Janess and I, we went down there, and it's money well spent on a vehicle that the city desperately needed. Not that we didn't have one before, but it has seen its days. So to leave this on a good note with ARPA funding, thank you so much for this money. Thank you.
Councilor Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Robinson. I, I like the idea of, you know, also include while you added, this is in a form of draft, while you added to make correction and to come back to us, also considers those who worked during the COVID incidents left the, the city as well. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Councillor Yem, second by Councillor Scott. Motion is adopted. We now go to the next item on the agenda on Constable Barnes. City manager requests approval of Constable Barnes. Any comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Councillor Rook, second by Councillor Janess. Mr. Clerk, Rook, call please.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rook?
Yes.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
Yep.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor Mosia?
Yes.
Councillor Newn? That's 11 years.
Next on the agenda is the report from a subcommittee, the Neighborhood Subcommittee, March 6, 2023. Any report, Councillor Mosia?
Yes, was there a report? You bet there's a report here. Last evening, we ventured out to the Dom Polsky Club to bring our Neighborhood Subcommittee on the road. This time, it was CNAG. And Judge Procope, Procope, the CNA, Centerville Neighborhood Action Group president, presided along with Kirsten Reisch, Vice President. They were there with a large amount of residents, as well as former school committee woman Regina Fattacanti. With us were subcommittee members, Councillor Janess and Councillor Gitchia, along with Councillor Newn and Councillor Robinson, our neighborhood liaison from the city, Letitia Marquez, along with Stephanie Baff, representing State Representative Rodney Elliott. And last, but certainly not least, was our city clerk, Michael Gary. So first up was the police officer Captain Jack Sheehan, who gave an overview of the 26 incidents in the past 30 days, six aggravated assaults, burglary entry made on several occasions to a vacant unit, six car breaks all remain open, tools were targeted in one incident. So please remember to lock your car vehicles when you're not using them. One was a disorderly conduct cleared by arrest and involved a noise complaint from a party intoxicated and uncooperative in three shopliftings, two at CVS, one at Walgreens, nine vandalism arrests in one case. Captain Sheehan showed a map of the Centerville area as to where and what streets these incidents happened. Before the meeting started, a young lady told me, and as I'm saying this report, there are some things that I would ask the Assistant City Manager Sean to write down, and please check these out for, for the residents, because the purpose of the meeting was to go there and see what their concerns was. So there was a young woman, she told me about a mattress dumped by a telephone pole and, and along a fence. It was left there for over a week on Hampshire Street. Hampshire Street's not a very big long street, so if you see a telephone pole and there's a fence nearby, that's where that mattress is. She also said that one of the gates to the baseball field behind her house is missing a part of the gate. So I guess there's two gates, but one is not there. So if you could check that out, I don't, I haven't really looked. Now for the residents' concern, we started with this particular man. I don't think I should say his name. People might know who he is. He was very irate. He kind of scared us. I mean, he scared me for a while there. He was a 40-year employee of the city. He said that the city is a mess. We need to start repairing and maintaining our roads. Only one street sweeper, and that's not enough. He hasn't even seen the one that we have on the street. He commented about filthy parks, yet we raised his taxes. He talked about how his trash was not picked up on time. But I want to say specifically that my colleagues, Eric Gitchia and Wayne Janess, they did an outstanding job to calm this gentleman down. So I'm very grateful for that. They worked tirelessly to respond to his many questions, and this man shot back and said that we ought to follow standard operating procedures. Another resident at the meeting said that he worked for the state for 38 years, and when the issue of potholes came up, he gave his expert opinion that filling potholes below 40 degrees is never really working satisfactorily, that there's frost heaves in the ground. And anytime the weather is above 45 degrees, filling the potholes are better. So I guess within 40 years of the man working for the city, I guess we never had any potholes then. But anyway, be that as it may. Another lady questioned why she had to pay taxes for schools when she had no children going to school, which prompted Ms. Fattacanti to say that someone in your shoes at one time paid for your kids to go to school, and that having an educated workforce creates a better city. The issues of the ZBA zoning related to the development of St. Louis school property and parking, these issues got very heated, to which Councilor Robinson addressed it. A very passionate woman talked about commercial vehicles parking in Centerville on 8th Street. Here's another thing, Sean. On 8th Street, 9th Street, Webster Street, the streets are overloaded with congestion to the point of parking on both sides of the street, limiting a two-way street to act as a one-way. The vehicles are box trucks, vans with loads of ladders on them, vehicles with large trailers storing roofing materials, and she said that it's out of control. But as Officer Captain as Officer Captain, Captain Sheehan explained, vehicle, if the vehicle is looking like this and it's under 12,000 pounds and it's commercial, there's no problem. And there's nothing that can be done about it. And that is the law. So, we can't do anything about that. Speeding is a problem, to which Council Janess explained that through his motion, we lowered the speed limit to 25 miles per hour throughout the city, and that there will be an educational campaign when the signs get here, which could be between three and six months. Concerns raised from loud car noises to decibel meters. Can we get speed bumps? And people are concerned with crosswalks and beautifying the city. Residents want more police out there in public. One person who lives on Richardson Street says that McPherson Park and both sides of the street are cars parking on both sides of the street, on Richardson Street and Bridge Street along McPherson's Park. I know that because I see it when I go by. But he would like to get these cars off the street when there's games playing at McPherson Park. He'd like them to park up the hill at the Robinson School and then come down the path to cross the street. He'd like an officer to have the people cross safely because there's too much car congestion. One person talked about the weeds along all roads. And I believe we do not have a chemical applicator. I don't know if we do. And I believe that if we did, we would need a person trained to handle chemicals. So, I don't know if we have a chemical applicator to get rid of the weeds. And do we have a person that's trained in chemicals to be able to handle that, to do that function? I don't know. That's what the concern in the city was at this meeting. Lastly, a gentleman from 10th Street named Britt announced that, well, they have announcements like we do here. So, his announcement was on Thursday, March 30, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Mill Number Five on the fifth floor on Jackson Street. There will be a chili and stew contest, a cash bar, live entertainment, community awards and fun put on by the DIY Lowell. Tickets at $10 in advance, $15 at the door. Kids under 12 are free. That is my report of progress from the traveling Neighborhood Subcommittee. Council Robinson, did you want to say something about your litter crew on March 18 to segue it in? But I want to thank my committee members. They did an outstanding job. I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Council Mercier. A very detailed, thorough report. I'd like to thank my colleagues that I joined in the trenches, so to say, yesterday. And some of the things that came up in the neighborhood meeting, and it's been surfacing, and I believe it's citywide, there's some real concerns centered around zoning and the amount of variances being issued, especially in densely populated neighborhoods. We see it time and time again, and I know it's an independent board from this council. Any information back on what can residents do to find out how that system works, what that process looks like? Because we see repeatedly that they're jamming variances down the residents, I mean, they've had a petition of 150 signatures, and they jammed the variances down the neighborhood's throat. And I know it's frustrating. I know it's not something that's in the council's purview. I just, any information that could come back as to what the residents can at least understand on how that process works would be greatly appreciated. Another thing that surfaced year after year, McPherson's Park. And let me say this first. The tournaments bring people into the city. The fields are getting used. That's what they created for. Now, I just think we need to minimize the negative impacts in the neighborhood. Some of the things that I'd like to see come out of that, and I'm going to work with my colleagues maybe to put in a motion, is A, I think they should be required, when they're running tournaments, to provide their own dumpsters and take care of their own trash disposal because that's something for years that the city's been doing complimentary. And again, we need to start looking at where are the savings for our taxpayers? So, I think that's one of the things that we need to look at. Another thing is, I don't know what the deal is with concession stands. I know that those are independently run, but they're after all on city property. And our permit fees are so low, but people are making a lot of money by utilizing city property. I think that's something else we need to take a look at, as well as, as my colleague mentioned, parking. It's a nightmare trying to get out of those streets during the tournaments. And the 20 feet from the corner rule is clearly not being obeyed. I think that might be an enforcement issue, as well as we might have to look at a satellite parking up at McPherson, where you can walk down the stairs, the physically able people can walk down the stairs. And across the street, there is a, one of the residents informed us how there is a push-button signal and a crosswalk right there. So, it is a safe traverse for pedestrians. Maybe we get that painted and brightened up for the spring. Because if we're going to demand people utilize that space to cross, I think we need to do our part. But these are just some of the things that happen in all the neighborhoods. It's no different than up on Beacon, when we have the soccer tournaments and you can barely get down Beacon Street. I think these are things we need to be mindful of. And again, I'd like to thank all my colleagues that were there last night to field the array of questions we had from the residents. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council Gitchia?
Thank you, Council, I mean, Mayor Chow. You know, as we go from neighborhood to neighborhood, it seems important that we look more and more into neighborhood issues when we look at just the way we lease out the fields was a big conversation with the parking police details during some of these events that are going on over there because of the number of people. So, you know, I think one of the most important meetings that we're probably going to have in the next week or so would probably be the Parks Subcommittee. I think it's important to get to that before we get to the springtime and people start leasing these properties and getting permits. Because there should be restrictions with their permits, and the fees need to be definitely adjusted. If they don't bring a police officer to some of these events, then maybe the city would make them do it in a permit, or we could provide it that way. But that was a major concern with the neighborhood is the way people park during these tournaments, and they basically do not care. So, I thank my colleagues for the other night. It was a very important meeting to listen to other neighbors speak about how their neighborhood's being treated. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to accept the report as reported by Council Noon, second by Council Janess.
Mr. Mayor?
Motion is adopted. Council Rook?
If I could, could you schedule a Transportation Subcommittee for next Tuesday, please? 5:30?
Transportation Subcommittee?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take a note of that?
It would be a shared streets update in response to the many motions to deal with traffic within the city over the past 15 months now.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments before we go to the next item on the agenda? Here none. The next item on the agenda is 6.2, wire inspection, Mass Electric Company, DBA, National Grid and Verizon, New England, request to install one Joe pole and extend secondary to new pole on Burnside Street. Any comments or questions by any councilor? Here none. Need a motion to accept and adopt accompanying orders by Council Gitchia, second by Council Janess. Motion is adopted.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Noom?
Can we bundle 7.1 to 7.3?
To 7.3, second by, motion by Council Noom, second by Council Robinson, to bundle 7.1, 7.2 and 7.3. These are the petitions. 7.1, claims to property damage. 7.2 miscellaneous gearing Gary LLP for some debt. Zai Songkham requests rezone 38 Nelson Avenue from traditional single family to traditional two-family zoning district. And 7.3 miscellaneous natural juicing request to install an overhanging sign, 120 Merrimack Street. Any comments or questions on any of these motions? Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on 7.2 as far as the zoning change for Nelson Ave. My question just, we did one not that long ago. I believe it was on Whipple Street. It was the same type of situation. It's abutting the traditional two-family neighborhood. I was just trying to find out, this whole neighborhood surrounding this is mostly two-family, a lot of two-family homes. So, I was trying to find out whether or not we've done any zoning review recently at all, to see if this is something that should change beyond just, you know, one house here and there.
Quick question, Councilor. Mr. Manager? To the DPD Director?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I think that one of the things that we, with zoning, have to sort of be careful with is spot zoning, which is just a single individual parcel at a time, because it's just sort of an unfair way in general to proceed with zoning changes. But I think that when we are talking about where the location where like two different zones meet, and there has been, you know, other properties that have been grandfathered in over time, so that, you know, a change for something like a two, a single family to a two-family wouldn't be that dramatic of a negative impact on the community, then we can, we could, the council could consider, you know, changes to the broader zone itself. But generally speaking, we try to always avoid individual, just one parcel at a time, zoning spot changes, I guess.
Thank you.
Council Scott, you all set? Any other comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to refer to Law Department by Council Noon, second by Council Janess. Motion is adopted. We now have reached the section of the City Council motions. And there's one motion on the agenda that has registered speaker. I'd like a motion to suspend the rule and take 8.10 out of order by Council Robinson, second by Council Yem. Motion 8.10 is a motion by myself requesting City Manager explore the potential and benefits of combining the opioid task force and the homeless task force.
Second.
By Council Noon. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the registered speaker?
Was that Dee Halsak? She was requested Zoom, but she's not present on Zoom. Ron Peastree? She's not on the Zoom, sir.
My name is Ron Peastree. I live at 240 Beacon Street here in Lowell. I'd like to note my opposition to the idea that we mix housing issues and drug issues tends to send the signal that for some strange reason, people who are homeless are all drug abusers. That seems to be the wrong message. And it seems to be that that would be making war on people who are sick or ill or have a problem, rather than making a war on the problem itself. I am completely up with the idea that we could take the housing issues for the homeless and fold it into the other housing issues that our city has. We should approach those problems as a unified thing because, let's be honest, all of us are just one disaster away from being homeless ourselves, for the vast majority of us. So, I'd like us to make war on poverty, not on poor people, make war on home security issues, not on people who have unfortunately been harmed by it, and make war on drug addiction, not people who are drug addicts. Thank you.
Cory Belanger?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Dee Halsak sent me her notes in case she wasn't able to attend remotely, and I was wondering if the City Council would allow me to read her notes to you?
Motion by Council Robinson, second by Council Gitchia. Do you allow to speak on behalf of Dee Halsak?
Thank you. Now, I have to find that.
Would you please read your name again and your address?
My name is Chris Afferman. I live at 200 Market Street in Lowell. I'm speaking for Dee Halsak. She is living at 318 Pawtucket Street in Lowell. And the following are Dee's words now that I'm reading here. So, Dee says, "I'm speaking tonight to urge you not to combine the opioid task force of the homelessness task force. Opioid use and abuse and homelessness are two different issues. While there may be some overlap because some opioid users are also homeless, but not all unhoused people are opioid users. According to Nish Academy, which trains people who work in shelters for the unhoused, in any given population of unhoused people, approximately 10% will be chronically homeless, people experiencing issues with mental illness and/or substance use disorder who need a multitude of services. Another 40% or so will need services, and it will probably take approximately a year for them to find a new stable home. Around 50% are people who don't need a lot of services, just help finding a new affordable place to live. There are many reasons why people end up unhoused. Among the reasons that people lose their homes are fires. We've had a number of affordable buildings burn in the last few years in Lowell. A friend of mine lost her apartment to a fire on Westford Street. Buildings get sold to companies hoping to turn a profit by simply buying and reselling because the value keeps going up. Damage beyond the control of the renter, broken pipes, floods from broken water mains, health violations, makes the building suddenly uninhabitable. None of these things have anything to do with opioid use, nor do dealing with them have anything to do with getting people with substance use disorder into treatment, preventing them from putting their neighbors at risk. In short, substance use disorder and homelessness are two very different issues that require the full attention of the bodies called to work on them. You will be doing a disservice to the city if you end up given less time to either by combining them into one task force. Thank you."
Cory Belanger?
Thank you very much. Cory Belanger, Chairman of the Mayor's Opioid Task Force since its inception in 2015. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this motion tonight. Mr. Manager, Staff and Councilors, it's great to be here with you on this very important topic. So, tonight, I would like to give you a brief update as well as make a recommendation. Now, the task force has been a very active and a very effective task force since 2015. However, we have been inactive since September of 2022 due to the departure of Laney Emon, the former substance use coordinator. So, over the years, task force members, and participation unfortunately has been dwindling. Now, we all know the issue is out there and still very prevalent in our community. But, you know, I don't want to say nobody cares anymore, but let's say I think the issue has passed many by. And it seems homelessness now is on the forefront, rightfully so. I mean, when I served in the council from 2014 to 2017, it was the very height of the opioid crisis, which still persists today. So, keeping in constant contact with Mayor Chow, who's been very supportive, very interested in our goings-on in the task force, we're about to, quote, resurrect it again. However, I see, you know, rumblings, what I see from this council often comes up in the newspapers and the airwaves, is that a homeless coalition is about to be formed, which is great. We need it. So, but I also would like to update you as to the crisis itself and how it affects the residents of our city. You know, we are doing very, very well, considering. It's still a national crisis. It is spiking all throughout the country. However, our city seems to be bucking the trend, and I'm very happy to inform you of that. We are doing very well in regards to percentages where city of our size, we are holding our own percentage-wise. We are far under the national average as far as overdoses. That's both fatal and non-fatal. The total fatal overdoses in 2017 was in the high 70s, near 80. It has since dropped, and 2022 was in the mid to high 40s is right now. As desk had confirmed, it could creep up slightly, but that's still down considerably to the height where we were. And nationally, that number is up drastically. So, that's the good news. And, you know, tonight, I'd like to credit all task force members, our EMTs, police, fire, glorious co-op team, our boots on the ground. They're the real heroes that are on the ground, you know, working with this population. So, seeing that, you know, homelessness on the forefront, and, you know, with this still ravaging our city and every city throughout the country. You know, I think it's best that we do combine these two forces, if you will. Okay? Now, this is by no means, the previous speakers made some great points. This is by no means a war on poverty or homelessness. This is a strategy to best serve this population. Now, not every homeless person is a drug addict, absolutely. But all too often, addiction Now, not every homeless person is a drug addict, absolutely. But all too often, addiction leads to homelessness. Mental health, if people aren't staying true to their medication, leads to drug addiction. They are self-medicating on the street, which then leads to homelessness. It is all intertwined. It's case by case, but all too often, one can lead to another when the individual reaches crisis levels. So, if we can combine in one coalition and have everything at this table, instead of working in silos with the opioid crisis here, homeless here, mental health here, why not make a coalition of all these resources? It I think would be remarkably effective in serving this population. We're already doing a great job, I think, on the opioid crisis. We're, we're bucking the national average again, not to be repetitive. You know, homelessness is very prevalent in our city and every city. I mean, it's one thing that I still hear from people today when I go, but travel to any other city or town in the Commonwealth, it's there too. So, again, I think this population is deserving of the best services we can provide them and give them the outlet to the resources they need by having everything, every, everything at our disposal at the table for these people. As for the street team that hits the ground, I think it would be the best strategy to best serve this population in our city. So, thank you very much. I will do, I will still continue my role, whatever this body may decide. But that would be my recommendation going forward. So, please consider it. I'll be available for any questions or comments. And I'll be waiting to hear from you. Thank you very much.
Dahi Counselor. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd first like to thank the speakers. I'm glad the conversation's happening. This is something that we need to continue discussing and looking into best practices. I'd like to see this report come back with, with some data to support whatever way, or actually, both ways of, of looking at this. I'd like to see the data to support it. I still want to be mindful of though, one of the things we've discussed here is working towards five or six small boutique style, 15 to 30 bed facilities with specialized wraparound services. So, I'm not 100% sold on combining, but I'm not taking it off the table either. I'm open to listening to the data to support the argument. I think we need to continue though, because within this, these many subcategories, it, it's going to take pretty much specialized services for each of the subcategories. So, please, let's be mindful of that. I know this is just a request to explore this, and I'm looking forward to the report that comes back. Thank you.
Counsel Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too were looking for a report. I do share the concern as well for the speakers. You know, but by no, by no mean, any of this council would, you know, put blame on homeless population, whatever reason that may be for them to be homeless. There's many ways, many, many reasons why people are homeless. Some because they cannot afford the rent anymore. Single mom cannot afford rent anymore. You know, people who have mental illness or, or drug addiction. So, I'm not sure, quite sure either whether or not combined the, the two together will be a force. But I, I know that the homeless coordinator and the homeless task force that we have is working, actively working under the leadership of the Lisa Golden as well as, you know, Ms. Fitzpatrick. So, you know, looking for the report and see where we go from the, from here. But the issue of homeless in our city, we need that, that's forefront for everyone here and for our city. So, let's work together to, you know, help the population that need the help the most. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I think the intentions here are good. I just would need a little clarification because I thought that these task force was set up through the mayor's office. So, it really wouldn't be a decision on the manager. It would be decision on your office and a recommendation to the council. So, I don't know if someone can correct me, but I know, you know, in previous years, manager Lynch took this on. But I'm assuming that this is under the purview of the, of the council. So, I don't, I think it should be a decision from you. And if you want to combine them for your term, then you could combine them. And subcommittees can talk on the issues, but I'm not sure where you want to take this. I, I would think it's up to you, but not up to the manager's office to come back with the report. So.
Thank you, Counsel. And my understanding, and I will make comment on it after the, all the council, all the council want to make comment. But for now, I understanding is that, and I will have discussion with the manager. But I believe that the, the homeless task force that the manager's been working closely with is Lisa Golden and Ms. Fitzpatrick. So, it'd be something that the manager's office and the mayor's office has to work together, even though the mayor put it together. But myself, I don't want to take on something as important as this solely on, rest on the shoulder of the mayor's office because we have great resources from the city manager's office, the administration. So, I definitely want to work together with, with the manager's office. So, this is an ask to explore as the intention of the, of the motion is. And I will comment that later. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. The one thing that the speaker had, had said is that there's a collaboration. So, I'm not sure why we would need to combine if there's a collaboration. So, the one thing that I would ask is that we would do a roll call on this motion because I don't, I agree with the speakers. I don't see a need to actually combine. So, I, I would ask that we would take a voice roll call on, on this motion.
Dahi Counselor. Counsel drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also agree with a lot of the, the points raised by the, the speakers here. And I agree that the, the intentions here are, are good. And I believe the intent here really is collaboration. And if collaboration is the goal, I, I certainly think that should happen between the two task forces. But I believe these issues are substantially different enough in that there are a number of issues that are singular to the, the issue of opioid addiction. And there are a lot of issues that are singular to the issue of homelessness that they still deserve their own task forces and, and, and attention. That, you know, and where there is the opportunity for, for collaboration or where there's overlap between the two issues, as we know there is, then I think it makes sense for the, the two bodies to work together. And if we need to figure out ways to rejuvenate the opioid task force, and I know the, the chair has indicated that there's things in the works as far as that goes, I, I'm glad that's happening. But, you know, I, I have to say, I don't think I can support combining them when there are so many opportunities for the bodies to, to work together at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the speakers who came out to, to share their thoughts and opinions with us. I think it's very important to get this kind of public input during these meetings. And so, I appreciate them taking the time to come down and, and share their thoughts with us. I, I too have concerns about combining these two functional areas. I feel like there, while there is overlap, there's a lot of distinct items that both task force really need to handle. And if collaboration is the goal, which I think is a great goal, and I think that there are a lot of times these, these two teams can work together, joint meetings, subcommittee meetings, like we do with the city, like we do with the school committee for facilities, like some of the city council subcommittees do, may make a lot of sense here. I'm very curious as well what other communities are, are doing in this area. Obviously, opioid issues and homelessness issues are not unique to the city of Lowell. So, I'm curious what other communities are doing and where they're seeing successes. I really want to go down whichever path will lead to the best results. And that may be, you know, significantly influenced by who we have on these committees and the resources that we as Lowell and are unique to Lowell are available to us. But I do think it's worth looking around and, and just understanding what other communities are doing. So, for that reason, I, I will support the report, but I'm not yet convinced that combining them is the way to go. Thank you.
Counsel Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor here asked for a, to explore and communication between the mayor and the managers, you know, maybe is the, the mayor say on, on this because both task force was directed by the mayor, either be housings and/or the opiates. So, the mayor asked for a report, explore, to explore on this. But at the end of day, the mayor come, may come back after a conversation with the managers that, let's leave it as this and let's, let the two group collaborate. So, I support to have the, to explore, get report on this, whichever, however it come out. Thank you.
Counsel Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Counselors Janess and, and Nguyen. The more options are being given to us, I think, the better. But I do believe that both separate entities have been doing a rather pretty impressive job recently. I think with, you know, with Lisa Golden and Ms. Fitzpatrick with housing and health and, you know, and, you know, Mr. Belanger with his work in opioid task force, you know, numbers have been getting better. And I think services have improved. But, you know, I'm looking forward to see what options are available to continue that path going forward. You know, and as Counselor Janess said earlier, whether maybe communities and towns are doing, and there's been multiple motions filed on collaborations and, you know, group settings to see what's best be done. And I think, you know, recently as a city, we've done a pretty good job of that. I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah. As was mentioned, it's, I think before we worry about even whose responsibility it would be to ultimately decide this, I think we need to make informed decisions on all this. And, and so, it's, it's tough to even really weigh past an exploration right now because without the data to support what other communities are doing and how effective this could be or isn't going to be, it, it's tough to even gauge. And so, I think we're, we're taking guesses at this point. So, I would, I would support the motion in the form of, I hope this is a, a report that comes back heavy with data that, that can support both sides.
Counsel Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, I did speak to Cory on this very particular issue, Cory Belanger. And it seemed like a good idea. I didn't really think it through till we heard speakers here today saying, everybody that's homeless, they're not all opioid users. And I never gave that a thought. So, although I would support a report to see, to explore, that's what the motion says, I could support you to explore, but yet I can't support separating them. So, how would you vote in a case like that? Do I vote yes to allow you to explore even though I'm voting yes, like I support it? Because personally, I don't support combining them after I heard the other side. Sometimes you can be, I, I know Cory's heart is in the right place. I don't even think we ever gave it a thought about that. So, it's kind of hard to say. I don't have a problem with the report. I never did. But I'm ultimately thinking I don't want to include them to get, join them together. I think I'd separate them. Like Counselor Janess said, we have many subcommittees that are not joined together, but at times we have a joint subcommittee of this issue with that issue. Because if it's an issue of homelessness for people that have a drug problem, that's possible too. But not everybody that's homeless is on drugs. There's mental illness. There's affordable housing that they, you know, their job does not qualify them to be able to adjust to their rent increase. So, they're homeless. That's very sad. So, I'm, I'm a Libra. We balance the scale here. And I, I don't know which way to go now. But thank you.
Counsel Yen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thanks the speakers on both side to come out to, to speak on the matter. To me, I would support this motion of exploring, but I'm in favor to keep the, the subcommittee, the task force separated. But they can work together, have a joint meeting sometime together. I understand certain time, we may not have the resource of, of the power, of people's power to, to operate both, both task force. So, like Cory Belanger mentioned, that was when he first started, the task force on opioid addiction is very, the forefront. But right now, it's kind of in a way, the, the homeless issue is forefront of the city. I think the combine is the issue of the resource that do we have the resource to continue to both, to have the task force. But let's, I will be voting in favor to explore that. So, that's, that's my comment. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also going to vote to support the motion to explore it. I do have the same concerns that I think they're very large issues that probably stand alone and do need their own task force. But I am curious to hear about the overlap that's happening between, you know, the membership of each of these committees, whether or not, you know, we're not saying that the two items, you know, go together and that, you know, we're not calling all homeless people opioid addicted. But if there's a way possibly to combine them and have separate discussions on issues, including mental health, opioid, you know, homelessness, whether or not it makes sense for the resources to all meet at once, kind of like a human services, human, you know, subcommittee type of group that, that covers all different topics, not combining them together, but just separate discussions with the same group of people. Thank you.
Counsel Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. The word explore doesn't really sell anything. I heard many councils say data, data, data. Through you to the manager, when you read this, what data are you going to come back with? Like, what, what do you look for, for data? You know, are we talking about families that are homeless that because they can't pay their rent? You know, there's so much to this homeless piece that in itself is a full undertaking. And, and I just think that we've heard multiple speakers here say, we're not going to support it no matter what the information comes back at. So, what is the point in giving this manager's office more and more work that we're not going to support in the end anyway? But if the manager has help that can keep exploring things, we can call Dora.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to be clear too, that I think the motion has good intent. Speakers here came out and made some great points. And I just think it's a fruitless errand to have the manager's office come back with a report that we're not going to support. If the manager wants to come to one of the subcommittees and speak and give us information, great. The two subcommittees, the two boards do a great job, the opioid task force and the homeless task force. They can always meet together and combine their meetings. So, I think it's just, you know, work that we're going to have the manager's office do that is just really not helpful to us. So, I'm going to vote to keep them separate, but they can combine their work and their, and keep doing the great work that they do. Thank you.
Counsel Rook?
Roll call, please.
Counsel Rook, I'm just gonna mention, this is my motion. Let me just give a brief explanation.
You don't count. Oh, yeah.
From, from up here. So, the, first of all, I want to thank Cory Belanger for coming to speak and the other two speakers as well. Both have made very good points that really touch upon what the rest of the council is thinking, you know, what are the benefits and what are the, the negatives of combining the two task force. As, as Counsel Leahy mentioned, these are under the purview of, of the mayor's office to do with, with the task force. It's the mayor's role. But obviously, these, these two task force, they are very, very important teams, so to speak. They take on issues that, as many of the members have mentioned, they take a huge role on, on its own. So, the intent of this, really because I see it, it's, it's such a vital part of the city's issues that we're facing with. And we, we have expertise on both side, on, on both sides of, of the task force. And the intent of this is just we're to explore what could be the benefits, if there is any. They might not be. But it's asking the city's manager's office. I, the mayor's office would not have the capability or the resources to do studies, to write out report that presented to you, the member of the council, to the public. So, if the- So if the, uh, the manager's office could explore this and come back, say, you know, whether it benefit, um, to helping deal with these both issues or not, uh, we, we can go by that. But I think it's premature to dismiss, um, information that could be gathered, that could be important to both, um, task force. Um, just say, we don't wanna see the task force, we don't want it because we're gonna vote against it anyway. I think we should, we, before we make a decision, we need to get the information first. So really, the intent of this motion is real to explore, to get the report from the manager's office and, um, you know, as, as the mayor, I don't really wanna make a decision on this by myself. That's why I rely on the, on a council member, and we make this public, we make it transparent. So we get the public input into when the report comes back in, um, as well. Um, I wanna thank the opportunity to speak a little bit of my motion and per Councilor Rourke's request and Consul Gishia to ask roll call. Mr. Clerk, please do roll call.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
No.
Council Gitchia?
No.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
No.
Uh, Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Now, we're going back to the regular agenda. We were left off with the, uh, motions. Mr. Clerk, any other motion that has registered speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we start with, uh, the first motion on the agenda. Eight point one, a counselor by couns-, a motion by Consul Gishia, request city manager have the property department provide the city council with a list of road surface treatments, crack sealing, fork sealing, micros-, micro surfacing and cape sealing, plan for upcoming paving season fiscal year twenty-four, and timeline for the contract execution. Second by Consul Anun.
Consul Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Just with all the, um, pavement maintenance, I just wanted to see where we are for FY twenty-four and do we have a contract ready for that period of time? That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments, uh, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, through to the councilor. Counselor, would you like to include also everything that we have coming forward?
No, cause I, I think that we had,
You wouldn't have that, I just,
Yeah, FY twenty-three, we've kinda highlighted already, so I'm just worried about from July going forward so that we have the next one in place prior to July first, so that we can try to get that wrapped into. While they're here, it may be the smart time to grab them because you may get a cheaper, um, price. So if you go out to bid now, you may get cheaper price if they're in here during May and June and you can pick them up in July and August.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hey, none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, motion is carried. We now go to motion eight point two by Consul Robinson, request city manager provide an update on request to explain disparities and inconsistencies in employees being required to use time clocks. Second by Consul Mosia. Consul Robinson?
Thank you. This motion was filed back on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, I believe it was. And, um, this should've been something they could've spit out. I reserved, received the call about four months ago from, uh, the HR director saying they were working on this motion response at, at the time, and I still haven't seen this. I mean, as was mentioned earlier, with ARPA, it would've helped for tracking. Um, it's, it's, in some instances, we are, we have the, pretty much the fox got in the hen house. And, and, and not to say that employees are doing anything funny with time, but there's no tracking of time. And, and we have a lot of hourly employees in locations that already have time clocks that aren't being required to punch the time clocks. Meanwhile, their, their counterparts and, and people below them are required to punch time clocks. I just, I don't see what the logic behind any of this is. And, and it's not a, a union situation, if that's an excuse that, that anyone's gonna try to throw out there, because the city has the right to protect their interests and their investments and to monitor. I mean, we're talking about pay. We're talking about hours worked. We're talking about even in some instances, who's entering what locations, when and where. And so I, I think, um, when we start talking about being equal to all employees in many areas, this is a key area. I mean, just morale alone. Uh, you have some employees being forced to punch clocks and they're looking at their counterpart that's not required to punch clocks, and it's because their union affiliation or whatever it may be. And, and I know that wasn't created with this administration. Uh, I'm looking for this administration though to, to work to correct this and, and level the playing field for everybody and make everybody accountable. I mean, we're not asking a lot, we're, we're asking people to punch a time clock so that we, we can track them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, as you know, I try not to answer these, this, at this time, uh, but Consul, you are correct, uh, but however, we were locked into that CVA discussion, just to let you know. Uh, but I did speak with, um, Attorney Williams and we did have that discussion and we should have, actually, you did remind us, but I wanna be honest, we were stuck with the CVA. Uh, that's CVA, CVA argument, but, uh, we will have this ready for you, uh, by next week. My apologies for the delay.
Thank you.
Councilor Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to add our oats. Do we have currently employees who are punching in through executive time, which is the munis piece?
Yes, we do. We, uh, DPW uses executive time.
So DPW uses executive time, and, and do you consider that an easier function for payroll versus the paper trail that just keeps coming every week? And, you know, it would, it's a lot easier, and, and I won't put her on the spot, it's a lot easier in a function to have this under executive time in a management standpoint so that you can look over rather than walking out to see if somebody's in, someone's out, who knows what people are doing. It's, it's just a, it makes total sense and it's a function for the city. So I think this is a phenomenal motion because even if someone comes in, jumps in a truck, they go somewhere, you know, exact times, people came in, people left, and it supports the employee more than anybody. And in this day and age, we just went through going to every other week because we were trying to make payroll easier. Punches make it easier for accountability on both sides, management and the employee. So when they're looking, saying, okay, over overtime and other things, these things are functions that should've been long before this manager had taken care of. And I just think if we're gonna be an efficient government, people should have to punch in and out when they come to a workplace. And, and it's easy to track through executive time. All of the pieces are already in place through the munis, and if we're already doing it as a function, it should be easy. And I don't think it's fair to employees that have to punch while others don't have to punch, if you're in the same workforce. So that, that's my take on it. I think it's a phenomenal motion again by Consul Robinson. I think anybody who's non-salried, no matter where they are, should have to punch. And that's just, uh, my thoughts on the punch clock. It makes it easier for management to actually look in and follow their payroll system. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Consul Robinson?
I may be wrong, but I remember back when, um, this was discussed with the union. Two things that, that the city has the right to implement, and it's again, to protect their investments, um, GPS and time clocks. Those are two things that under Management's Rights Clause, I believe, they have the right to implement because again, it's accountability and it's protecting investment. And, and, and it's also verifying hours worked. Uh, it, in the state of mass, you cannot pay for hours that weren't worked outside of, uh, certain accrued benefits. So basically, this is another verification, check and balance system for hours worked. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Hey, none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motion is passed. The next motion is eight point three. A motion by Consul Scott, request the city manager report on the policies around trains idling on the tracks, how residents can report concerns and who enforces them. Second by Consul Yem. Consul Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the trains idling on the tracks has been a motion many times over on this council. Also, uh, twenty years I've been attending South Lowell Neighborhood Meetings, and throughout the years, it's come and gone as an issue over and over again. Um, lately, it had been fairly quiet, uh, but now I've had residents reach out to me since CSX has now taken over for Peonium. Um, they had a phone number, a dispatch phone number that they were able to call to let them know that the trains were idling at the end of, uh, State Street, Sydney Street, St. James Street, all those streets would have the phone number. Um, they would call and they would actually move the trains along. They, this is what the residents are telling me, they would move them along to a stretch, um, out behind the Tewksbury Walmart that didn't have any homes around it. Um, so now they've lost that contact, they're trying to find who they can reach out to and who to report it to for the city. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hey, none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. The next motion is also by Consul Scott, request the city manager report the timeframe in which residents should expect to receive contact back after filing through Civic Plus, and how the reporting functions are used by management to make sure issues are closed in a timely manner. Second by Consul Janess. Consul Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is again, from residents that have said they've completed, you know, uh, filing through Civic Plus and they haven't received a contact back. Um, I'm just trying to find out if we use the reporting functions within it, you know, at ten days, do we check that items are closed? At twenty days, do we check that items are closed? You know, and who does that report go to? You know, the assistant city manager, the manager? Um, so just to make sure that we use the functions of the system, reporting system that we currently have. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hey, none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the motion is passed. The next motion is motion eight point five, also by Consul Scott, request the city manager provide an update on the restroom parity issue at Lowell High and how it is being addressed. Second by Consul Mosia. Consul Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I made a motion back in January, asking for the high school designer, asking the high school designer if all the amenities at the high school are built to scale for the student population for Lowell High School, um, with thirty-two hundred students. At that time, we discussed the bathroom issue. Uh, the parents and some staff members had shared to me about long lines of students that were waiting outside of the gymnasium, uh, locker rooms mainly. Um, and we had said that they do meet code, that they were built to code, um, but do they meet the students' needs for the actual function that we need? So I made this motion basically just to ask if there are any updates from the city manager or the school building committee, if there had been any discussion on this. Um, just to really express my desire to have parity in bathroom access for the females at Lowell High School. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Consul Mosia?
Yes, thank you. This is very important, especially if you're a woman. And you know, we, I don't know what it is about women, but I don't know, my kidneys, I, I don't get it, but I, I, you always see that there's hardly anybody that are men that are standing there in a line, but you do see women in lines. No matter if you go into the cinema or you go into a restaurant, the fact is, the ratio for the bathrooms, that should be more for women. And I'm not trying to say that we're better because we're women, but we're built in such a way that our kidneys don't hold very much. So I'm just thinking that when we found out that the new athletic, uh, uh, building has two, you know, one and one, and that holds just two stalls per each, that's not acceptable in a brand new school that we're, and then we did have this discussion some time ago and we learned that, well, they're gonna build an adjacent, uh, the lunchroom, the, where the, there's gonna be bathrooms in there. That's not what we're talking about. I, I think it's very unfair, to the point that if I saw that there was nobody in the men's room, I'd be tempted to lock the door and go in there myself. So it's really something that since the school is being built, I thought, you know, please be fair about it and the fact that we need, I don't know what it is, women go in there longer, I, I don't know. I know I do, but anyway, that's something that we're concerned about because it's something brand new and we'd like it right the first time. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Consul Yem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to, uh, Consul Scott for bringing the issue forward. Um, I heard, I've heard the, um, the superintendent talked about the bathroom, uh, is built to the, uh, ratio of number of student, both male and female. However, uh, Consul Mercier touched upon that, you know, uh, the ladies take a bit longer, so therefore there should be an adjustment because this issue was brought up, uh, previously by Consul Scott, but we have not heard the report back. And thanks to Consul Scott to be on the issue, uh, to have it addressed and address immediately, not waiting until reconfiguration of the cra-, of the cafeteria, uh, things like that. So I appreciate her consistency on the issue because it's important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, thank you very much. Consul Scott, um, and to all the councilors, I appreciate it very much. As, uh, all of you know, uh, the project team from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, uh, we talked to the consultants and, uh, we talked about, uh, the toilets being met and, um, the fact that the, the actual count meets all of the codes, whether you're talking about the international code or the plumber's code, the state codes and everything else. But what we're, what we're finding out obviously is that through the normal course, course of business, now that we're actually open, that, uh, the functionality is not meeting the facility. So, um, I wanna say thank you very much to all the councilors, especially, uh, Consul Scott, Consul Mercier, thank you for the phone calls, but to all the councilors who called me today and over the past couple of weeks. I just wanted to let you know that we have been talking to, uh, Skanska, who has been working on this, as well as, uh, the, our folks over Perkins Eastman and Suffolk, that we are trying to, um, rectify the situation. So the goal here, um, I was just over, uh, walking the site today, and it's not to wait until, um, our next, um, uh, the next, uh, piece is, is up, which would be phase three, but is to increase the ladies' rooms, uh, by six, by up to six, uh, and maybe another gentleman's room up by one. So that is something that we're looking at. We should have, um, a final cost on that. That would be something that for the most part, um, the design, as most of you know, has been something that has been a work in progress, uh, five, five years back, moving forward. Uh, the design comes into paper, the paper comes into the operation, the operation then comes in. Uh, when we build it to the functionality, if the function's not working, we need to, um, we need to move. And, uh, that's what we're doing at this point in time. So, uh, the revisions will be made and, uh, none of the drawings at this, you know, are ever perfect, but I think with the, uh, the support of this council, uh, we will make that happen. And I thank each and every one of you for bringing this to, to, to my, um, attention. And, uh, once again, I was over there today, uh, and everybody seems on board from our team to make this happen as soon as possible. As soon as I do know the final costs as to what that is going to, going to, uh, bring to us, I will let you know. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Um, so real quick, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, it's gonna come in the form of a change order, I take it, correct? Okay.
Mister, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, through you to, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council, that'd be correct, it'd be a change order.
Okay, thank you very much.
Consul Leahy?
Thank you. I'm just curious, uh, through you to the manager, could we find out, is the last renovation was what, nineteen eighty, the building?
Mr. Manager?
I just wonder if the codes changed, what was the bathroom ratio at the last renovation versus this one? So you don't have to answer it now, but just curious if we can see what the difference was or is or, thank you.
That's a fair comment. Consul Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. At some point, through you to the, uh, city manager, at some point, can we have the designer come back into the council and explain, um, the ratios and also what the change orders could possibly be and what we're actually looking at, having done? I think it's important that we have them explain it in presentations like we've had in the past when, when we had issues that go on. I think it, it would be helpful for everyone, even the public, since, you know, people around today have taken a very, uh, stock interest in this. So if we could have them come out maybe in the next couple of weeks and sit down with us and, and see what the, uh, changes actually would be. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Uh, the next SBC meeting, council, if that's okay, would be March twenty-second. Uh, and then would the council prefer prior to the twenty-second or right after the SBC meeting?
Well, as soon as they can get it to us, because I think as, as we're moving, um, some of these things may, may take time because of the COVID and ordering materials and trying to get things done. So as soon as they can get to this body with the changes, um, would, would be imperative for us to understand where we're going and, and what needs to be done over there. So, you know, the sooner the better to the council. I, I don't know when they'll have the design ready. Have they been looking at this design already? So if they've been looking at it, then, you know, in the next couple of weeks, if they could get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo Counselor Gishia's sentiments as far as having the designer come in front of us. I have other questions that also surround, like this is one area that's a concern. Really like it to go back to the school building committee possibly, just to look, just to do another full look at all of the space, to make sure it's meeting the space needs for, like I said, 3,200 students. The designer, I understand that it meets code, but they look at function too, correct? I mean, you keep mentioning that, like I don't, I think that's what's missing here in this piece, is that we're missing the functional piece. And perhaps the code needs to be changed as well because if two bathrooms, locker room bathrooms for six gym classes with up to 180 kids, I would say, is sufficient, then that's not a very well-written code. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, just a quick comment from up here. Excellent motion, Counsel Scott, and comments by Counsel Mercier, as the rest of the council. And, you know, sometimes when a design is designed, planned by the professionals, the expertise might not be as good as the people using them. So sometimes you have to listen to the people actually using these facilities or the products. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is passed. The next motion on the agenda is eight point six, a motion by Counsel Janess, request city manager provide update to the council on the status of the LaLarche Park real estate transaction. Second by Counsel Lehe. Counsel Janess.
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is eight point seven, Counsel Janess and Counsel Scott, request city manager provide update on recommendation from the law department on possible updates to the flag raising policy in response to Supreme Court decision in the short left versus Boston. Who would like to make comment first? Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a motion that my colleague Counsel Scott brought forward just after the decision, asking for a policy review and potential update. And that was a while ago, and we're getting back to flag raising season, so I figured it was a good time to ask for an update on this. Thank you.
Any comments, Counsel Scott? Hearing none. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is eight point eight, Counsel Janess, request city manager provide update on hiring of the DEI officer position. Second by Counsel Yem. Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. This is just something that has been brought to me by a few different people, asking for an update on the plan with this. I said I wasn't sure, and I would bring this forward and ask you. And obviously, it's something we've talked about. And I just figured it was a good time to lay it out there where we're coming to the end of the fiscal third quarter here or so. You know, I know we're trying to tee up budgets and everything else as we move forward, and it's part of our overall DEI strategy and getting all this stuff in place. I think it's just important to know where this piece fits in the puzzle. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The motion is passed. The next motion is eight point nine, Counsel Lehe, request city manager update city council on traffic calming issues for City Hall. Second by Counsel Mercier. Counsel Lehe.
Thank you. I'd just like to get an update on this. I want to make sure that this project gets done this year. I don't want it to get lost and mixed in the shuffle so that we, you know, by the time we get a designer and we decide on it, and then all of a sudden, we're out of the season, and now we can't get anything constructed until the following year. So I've done my homework on this. I'm a big fan of the speed humps, but apparently, it's, you know, we have, there's a trade-off with all the new fire engines we got coming. We don't want to damage them. So I'd just like to get the update and see if we can get this going. Thank you.
Counsel Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you just add to it, it's not exactly the same area, but I got a couple of calls around the Hennix School, especially during school time as well. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is passed. We are taking up motion eight point 10, so we at the announcements. Any announcement by any member? Any announcement? Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say congratulations and good luck to the men's basketball team from UMass Lowell. They just defeated UNH 75-64 in their conference semifinal tournament. And so that means they'll be playing Saturday at 11:00 a.m., and if they win, they go to the NCAA tournament, Division One tournament, for the first time. So that would be a pretty amazing achievement, and good luck to them. Thank you.
I had to go for something, right?
Counsel Janess. Because I was going to watch the rerun of the game tonight.
My apologies.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Just to touch on, this is Women History Month, and the theme this year is dedicated month to reflect the often overlooked contributions of women to United States history. The theme this year is celebrating women who tell our stories. This theme recognizes women, past and present, who've been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. I would just like the public to be aware as well, March 18th, in collaboration with Mass DOT, City Lowell, and Lowell Litter Crew, I believe, we're going to start the kickoff of the cleanups citywide. It's going to be March 18th in Centerville. We'll be meeting, I believe, at 9:00 a.m. at Top Donut on Aiken, and we'll be cleaning from pretty much the Aiken Bridge to the Bridge Street Bridge. And so they'll be implementing a wildflower program as well for the first time this spring. So we're looking forward to that, and we're looking for volunteers. So March 18th. Thank you.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming up this week on March 9th at 12:00 o'clock noontime in the lobby of City Hall is the White Ribbon Day Campaign 2023. It's sponsored by Alternative House and our community partners to take the pledge to never commit, condone, or remain silent against violence. So that's going to be Thursday, March 9th.